Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 24th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00. And at this time, will Madam Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite.
Mellie Garthwaite, Council at Large, present.
Councilman Brian Lox.
Brian Lox, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan is absent. Councilwoman Ruby Melton. Councilwoman Sarah Akbaraly is absent. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, 4th District, present.
Councilman Edward McMillan.
Good evening, Edward McMillan, District 5, present.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan, 6th District, present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker, 7th District, present.
Councilman Christopher Vargo.
Councilman Christopher Vargo, 8th District, present.
Councilwoman Katie Muller.
Councilwoman Katie Muller, 9th District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, 10th District, present.
And Chairman Nicholas Pascal is absent this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we enter public session, I would like everybody to observe a moment of silence for Doug Kidd, a longtime civil servant, longtime employee of the city of West Haven. He recently passed away from a short bout of cancer, so if we could please bow our heads for a moment. Thank you. The time is 7:02, and we will enter public session. Would anybody from the public like to address the City Council? Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Kathy Hebert, 166 Bloom Street, West Haven. I haven't bothered you all for a while, so here I go. But it's all good. Marginal Drive is part of West Haven on the other side of Route 1. And it's also the property to the right of the curb is part of West River Memorial Park. Most of everything is owned by New Haven, but on the curb of Marginal Drive and to the left, where all the houses are and the road is, is West Haven. And I'm part of an organization, West River Watershed Coalition. And I've been working with, you know, Mayor Dorinda Boor. And my New Haven counterpart has been working with Mayor Ehrlich. Okay. And basically, we got a grant last year from National Park Service, a technical grant to help us plan a trail and hopefully go after grants to help us pay for the trail. And in doing all of this, it's really come to West River Watershed's feelings and our thoughts that this area, because it's in kinda both towns, neither town really has the money or the desire to really do a whole heck of a lot with it. And perhaps one of the solutions is to make this a regional park. So myself and Frank Cochran, my New Haven watershed partner, met at SCROG. And then I gave you a copy of the email, just 'cause I've been in technology hell. No computer, the printer stopped working. I haven't been able to really type anything, update anything. So we met on January 27th with James Rowe, the Director of Transportation Planning, and Stephanie Camp, Director of Trails. They were very, very interested in helping us achieve that goal. But it can't just start with me. It has to come from the town, the CEO of each town, which would be the mayor of West Haven, the mayor of New Haven. Because technically, SCROG is the name of the organization. South Central Regional Council of Governments works for the mayors, not for me or themselves. So what I was writing, and I did send a copy of this to Mayor Dorinda Boor, and I know you're busy, you know, so I'm not anything. Basically, to see if we could work on this, to see if we could get both Mayor Ehrlich, Ellicker, and Mayor Boor to connect with SCROG and request that we start this process. Myself and Frank are available to go to any meetings, talk to anyone, do anything. Because SCROG has access to money that we may not have access to. And I don't know all the details, and I know our new administration is changing a lot. So, you know, we may not get anywhere. But I just wanted to put this out there. National Park Service meets with us over Zoom once a month. And people in the West Haven City Hall, Catherine Krollick, Mark Payne, usually attend every one of those meetings. And if for no other reason, just to keep tabs on what we're talking about. And I also put, the second page is, we have monthly workdays. The first Saturday of every month, which is March 1st, April 5th, and May 3rd, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon on Marginal Drive. And just to let you know that one of our West Haven residents, Audie, who's pictured in the reddish shirt, put a trail in with the Eagle Scouts. He was, that was his Eagle Scout project. And it's not the complete trail. We want a trail from U&amp;H connecting all the way to Southern through Marginal Drive alongside Yale. Up, you know, we have a whole plan. And again, I couldn't make copies of the map because the printer wasn't working, et cetera. So just to let you know what I'm doing and what the West River Watershed is doing. I'm available for any questions, email, or phone. And you're all welcome to come to the cleanup. We, believe it or not, do it in the winter a lot more because we can see the garbage, because there's no leaves or brush growing. So we'll be there out Saturday. The second thing I just wanted to touch base about is I'm also in another organization, Sandy Point Neighborhood Association. And we have a program that we started, actually with Michelle Coletti, who's not here, but she got me connected to the principal of Savin Rock Community School. And I don't know if many of you are familiar with that, but they have a patch of a garden that's about the size of from here to that wall that was just garbage, brush garbage, right where the flag and sign was. So last year, I met with the principal and Michelle. We put together a plan to make it a, not perennial, native garden and to involve the kids with it. And so I've been to the school several times with the classes. And I am learning how to write grants. So I wrote a grant with the help of Robin Parsons to Wild Ones. It's a native plant organization. And we were just granted $498 to pay for the plants, the this, the that, the that, the this. So hopefully, I'll do what I'm supposed to do correctly with the paperwork, and we'll get this. But I just want to let you know that something good is happening. And I'm up here hopefully saying something good. And I need your help with the Marginal Drive, West River Memorial Park. And you can pass these around. I just didn't have enough copies.
Thank you, Ms. Hebert. Would anybody else like to address the City Council? Ma'am?
Hi, Bonnie Posick, 107 East Avenue. And I just want to piggyback on Kathy. We had two wins, little wins, in our neighborhood this past week. The first one is Do Not Enter sign that I've been advocating for at the corner of Park and East. And it was, it was put up this past week. And we're all so thrilled, the people in the neighborhood, we want to have a little party. And the second one is, I saw a couch sitting in the middle of Old Field Creek on Bloom Street on Wednesday on my way out. And I made a phone call to Public Works, and by Friday, it was gone. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to address the City Council? For a second time, would anybody else like to address the City Council?
Good evening, all. Vanessa Suarez, 740, Quinnupac Ave, New Haven. I am here, as I imagine you all know, because there has been another woman.
What city was that?
New Haven.
Thank you.
Because another woman in your city has been murdered as a result of intimate partner violence. Her name was Haley Miller, and she was a 19-year-old white woman who was murdered less than a quarter mile from when Roya was murdered on March 3rd. So, you know, and in addition to Haley Miller, there was a two-year-old baby, Tenaj Fletcher, who was also murdered. Both were stabbed to death. I attended the vigil last night for the baby, Tenaj. And frankly, it's been the largest vigil, which made me feel better and showed that there was some support for this family. But it's still a tragedy that should not have happened. And, you know, I don't want to be up here saying, "I told you so," or that I was right, because I didn't want to be right when I said there was going to be another Roya in your city. We've come for over a year advocating to make sure that there wouldn't be another woman in your city that was murdered, or a child, for that matter. We haven't come the last few months because Nika, my colleague, was hit by a car in a hit-and-run that almost killed her. And it's not a surprise that New Haven police are not investigating that. Like, West Haven police have failed to investigate Roya's murder. I mean, it's just, it's across-the-board police negligence. But I'm really heartbroken and shattered that there is another woman and a child that has died in this city. Within two years, there are now two women and a child. So that is three. So I am here to ask you, how many more deaths? How many more women and children is it going to take for this municipality, for you all, to take action on this issue in a real way? Connecticut averages about 14 women who are murdered by intimate partner homicide a year, which means that at the state level, domestic violence agencies have accepted that we will lose 14 women, at least. So I'm here to ask you all, because it seems like you all have, subconsciously, likely, or maybe not, have some number in your head. There must be some number in your head, because I feel like you're waiting for this to get to some severity, some gravity, that you say, "Oh, now we must take action" to acknowledge that the services, the agencies that are currently in place to service victims are not enough, and that there are gaps in services. So how, like, how many is it going to take? How many of that 14 statistic for us to really say, "No, this is a real issue"? And we also tried to appeal to you last year to use some of the federal pandemic funds to start creating your own services and programs to directly service victims. And that was not heard, those calls were unheard, that was not prioritized, despite us telling you that New Milford had taken that initiative and put federal funds into place to support domestic violence victims. And with the new administration, we see funding for vowel, for violence against women, being cut. So I'm struggling to understand how we can continue to accept this idea that there are enough services in place, that there is enough funding in place, that everything that exists already is working. It's not working. And I don't know how many more women and children need to die. I am begging you to not let there be another one, because it hurts. It's not just Haley's family that is suffering, and it's not just Tenaj's family that is suffering. So many. In Tenaj's vigil last night, there was Latinx families there. There was Indian and Pakistani families there. Faces that reminded me so much of the faces that we have spoken to since Roya's death, who have confirmed to us repeated times that there was so much domestic violence happening in those neighborhoods, in those apartments. Point two miles from where Roya was murdered. I don't know what other signs you need. I can't believe this to be just a coincidence. I think we all know better. You're all in government because you know better. And I'm frankly disappointed, because I don't know what else government is supposed to do than prioritize the livelihood and the safety of women and children. If not government, if not elected leaders, then who? You cannot leave women and children at the mercy of their abusers. You just can't, because this is what happens. They die. They're murdered brutally, painfully. So I don't know how many more times we have to come. I don't know how many more names, I don't know how many more faces. It's just really disappointing, and I need you all to hold this. Whether or not you were at these vigils, whether or not you're able to connect with these families directly, you have to hold these losses for what they are. Two precious lives taken from us way too soon. Haley had just recently moved here. I want to believe it's because she thought she would have a better life here. But I don't know that West Haven is proving to be a safe place for women. Is it a refuge for women, or is it not? These women really need to know. It's a matter of life or death. And I hope you really, really, really not just think about this, but take action. Know you're tired of seeing me here. I know, I'm sure you were great, glad we had some break from coming here. But this issue is ongoing. It's bigger than me, it's bigger than Haley and Tenaj and Roya. It's bigger than all the domestic service agencies that are currently in place trying to service these victims. The issue is much larger. Women and children are being killed at a faster rate than these agencies can support them. So please, I beg, as a municipality, take real action, form committees, survey. It is crazy, it baffles me that as a New Haven resident, I have been on the ground more in that neighborhood and spoken to more residents than probably any of you can say so. When this is a real issue that is ongoing in this community, I don't understand why it's not being assessed, why it's not being spoken about. They want to have a conversation, if you will reach out, if they know they're not alone in this issue. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to address the City Council? For a second time, would anybody else like to address the City Council? Third and final time, would anybody else like to address the City Council? Seeing none, public session is closed at 7:17. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Journal of the February 10, 2025 Regular Meeting. Do I have a second? First from Councilman Lox, second from Councilman McMillan. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Ruby, Councilwoman Melton abstained. Motion carries. And at this time, I will ask the council clerks to read the communications into the record.
We have Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for February 2025, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. Communication B from Kathy Coniff, Assistant Planner, regarding authorization under Section 57.3 of the zoning regulations, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and act on application made by the owner of 509 Campbell Avenue to replace the exterior lighting to be constructed in a public right-of-way, being assigned to the Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. And Communication C from Stephen Fontana, Director of Economic Development, regarding approval of the purchase and sales agreement with Ideal Group LLC for the sale of city-owned property located at 561 Main Street Style School, being assigned to the Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. And that concludes our communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is 7:19, and we will recess into committee meetings. And the show is now, Mr. Donovan's, under Public Lands.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 7:19. Committee on Public Lands is now in session. Members present, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Callahan, Councilman Vargo, and Councilman Johnstone, and myself, acting as chair. We have before us tonight Communication B from Kathy Coniff, Assistant Planner, requesting authorization under Section 57.3 of the zoning regulations, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and act on an application made by the owner of 509 Campbell Avenue to replace the exterior lighting to be constructed in a public right-of-way. I'd like to have a motion to bring this out favorably.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion pass. Next, we have Communication C from Stephen Fontana, Director of Economic Development, regarding approval of the purchase and sale agreement with Ideal Group LLC for the sale of the city-owned property located at 561 Main Street Style School. I'd like to bring this out for discussion. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion with the committee? Any questions from the committee? No? Open it up.
Yeah, I just wanted to double-check with this, too. I know that we had talked about it, just clarification on if, with this carrying, if anything comes up in the future, if we're liable, as far as cleanup goes, when they start to do the project.
Mike Jello, if you wouldn't mind, sir.
Hi.
What is your question?
The question is, going forward, and once they take over and start doing construction, is there, is there any chance of it coming back to us and them saying, "Well, we found this or that, and we can't go forward," i.e. asbestos or any other?
Right, well, the purchase and sale agreement is being sold. One of the conditions is it's an "as-is" condition. So the buyer is being given an opportunity of 90 days to do their own investigation as to whatever the condition of the property is. Once they ultimately purchase the property, anything that really is a problem after that is their responsibility.
Okay, thanks. That clears, that clears it up. So they have 90 days?
They have 90 days to do their permits and approvals and inspections, with an understanding that it's an "as-is" deal. We're not making any representations with respect to the condition of the property. So they're kind of buying it as it is right now. Which, obviously, it's in need of some, obviously, repair and attention, which is reflected in the purchase price.
Okay. And then I had a second question, or should I?
Nope.
Wait. The other question is, and I don't know if this is for now or when we speak with them. It's two floors and a basement, correct? Because we have a layout that it's three floors.
I believe it's two floors and a basement. That's my understanding of the layout of the building.
Okay, so that must change it from the 30 units down to less.
Mike, in retrospect, if you don't mind, Councilwoman.
Sure.
The stuff, the paperwork we got shows a basement, first floor, second floor, and third floor.
Okay, all right, I'm.
So I know at the P&amp;Z meeting I was at.
Yeah.
My understanding was they were eliminating that third floor, because they didn't get the engineer out there to do all that. Mayor, I don't know, might correct him.
They did, they wanted to make this, they wanted to add a third floor to make the top floor townhouses, two levels. They did have a structural engineer out there. I believe the structural engineer said they could, but they had decided not to.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then just with the basement then, and two floors, there's no elevator needed in that retrospect?
I don't, I don't believe there is an elevator required for what essentially is a two-story building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Anybody else on the, yes, Councilman Lox. Councilman.
He was talking to me.
Mr. Johnstone.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Jello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Could you walk us through the provision that if they decide to expand the project at some point in the future, that there's going to be an additional source of revenue to the city? Because I think that's a very interesting and attractive piece of this project.
Sure, so this particular purchase and sale agreement is based on the purchaser going through the planning and zoning phase for 30 additional units. What this also does provide for, if they wanted additional units within the next 50-year period, there would be an additional purchase price that is made per unit. So it's an additional $14,100 per additional unit above 30 units. And then each year, it increases by 3% to kind of account for the cost of living.
So it's, it's, right now, it's 14, let's just say it's 14,100.
If they're going for a 31st unit, it would be $14,100 additional.
And then the second unit would be $14,100 plus an additional 3%?
Yeah, the following year.
The following year.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the committee right now? Councilman Johnstone.
Thank you, Chairman, actually, I might have mine. Mike, going back to, you said so, on the agreement, they have 90 days, you said, to thoroughly go through the building, inspect it and all that.
Yep.
What does that 90 days mean for responsibility of the premise? I'm only asking, is because that has always been a troublesome spot for our police department.
So until the closing occurs, we're responsible for the property.
We're responsible, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to know.
So this 90-day period, we're responsible for that property, because we're still the title holders to that property.
Gotcha, that's all I need to know. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else on the committee? I'm going to open it up to the council. Now's the time to ask, to talk to corporate counsel, please. Now's the time to ask any questions. Anybody have any questions?
How you doing, Mike?
Good, how are you?
So given the, I believe you said it's 30 units that this first apartment is going to be?
Yes.
And given this space there, we were questioning the actual size here, that there is possibly enough room to start another, put another apartment building complex there?
An additional building.
An additional building.
Okay, I don't know about, I mean, any additional, any additional structure, any additional floors, anything like that, would have to be in compliance with West Haven's zoning compliance, the planning and zoning. So if they wanted to do a separate building with other units.
Okay, we're correct.
They would have to go through to make sure they meet, you know, parking requirements, bulk requirements, all the requirements that you would get when you file a traditional planning and zoning application. They would have to go through that same process. And then again, if they're awarded additional units, it's additional compensation for us
So it would be $14,000, the $14,000 start.
100, and then plus, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's also additional sewer hookups that, since the mayor has had that particular ordinance enacted through town, that would be an additional $105,000 for this renovation to the city, in addition to the purchase price.
Y'all set? Anybody else on the council have any questions? Councilwoman, no.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
So I just want to understand a little bit about what due diligence means here.
Sure.
There's a, there is a definition supposedly for due diligence period, and I couldn't really find it. But, you know, they, they make a deposit within, upon signing the purchase agreement. And then there's an obligation on the part of the city to deliver all sorts of data, sort of.
What we have, yes.
You have already?
No, whatever's in our possession. So it provides for if we have surveys and things of that nature.
Correct.
We would turn them over. Whatever we have in our possession, yeah.
And, and then they get the environment, they get this data from you, and then they have, there's another deposit.
Yes.
So during this period, before you go to closing, and while you're supposedly doing some due diligence, let's, they don't know what's in those documents that you deliver to them. Is there any recourse on their part other than to forfeit their deposit?
No.
And that's, and so that is, that is it?
Yeah.
With an "as-is" purchase, that is, that is it?
Yeah, we're not making any representations. It's kind of a buyer beware.
And if, so if they find something in the environmental report, for example?
Then they can choose not to go forward with the purchase.
They can choose not to go forward, and they forfeit the deposit.
I believe they do forfeit the deposit, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Y'all set, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else on the council? Councilwoman Dorothy?
Hi, Mike. Last time around, it was, what was it, 165 that we were getting?
For the last project?
Yes.
I don't remember the last project.
I think it was 165.
Yeah.
So now we're getting 423.
Yes. With sewer hookup, it's essentially 523.
Okay, so did we get any, did we use any comps for this? Or, I'm just curious, because.
It was put out to bid. So this was put out to a public bid to see, and my understanding is it was put out to several public bids.
I read that, yeah.
And, yeah, there was not a tremendous amount of actual viable alternatives. The one person last year, I think, who wanted to try to do kind of an indoor-growing facility of some sort, that ultimately, they could not get the financing for. And then, you know, we just kept trying to go out to bid just to see if there's any interest. This seemed to be the best, most viable.
This was the best, this was the best price-wise.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the council have any questions? Anybody else on the, from the council have any questions? Mayor?
So, I was going to comment, I was going to follow up on your question about additional units, but Mike answered that. It would have to go before zoning, and there would be, you know, a lot of, a lot of aspects that they would have to meet. Somebody else had a question? Oh, Ruby, you answered Ruby's question. But, just as a recap for anybody listening, just to kind of bring it home, so this is, you know, our old building that is sitting there is an ice war, and as you mentioned, is a, is a danger to the public. We put it out to bid, the prior administration put it out to bid, I'm not sure how many times. The last time they were going to sell it, it was to the hydroponic farm. I love hydroponic farms. However, they bought it for, you know, a less expensive amount, and it was, they were buying it as-is. However, when they purchased the building, and they hadn't paid us for the building, by the way, they then came to the state of Connecticut and asked for $10 million to renovate it. They came to me personally and asked for, not for me personally to pay, but me as the state representative, and that was not something I can in good conscience advocate for, given the city's priorities. And they said they couldn't go forward without that $10 million. I asked them, as a hydroponic farm, what they can do for the city, you know, food and security, what else can we do for jobs, and, and they weren't able to deliver on that either. So, it just wasn't, might have been a good vision, but at the end of the day, it wasn't a good project for the city of West Haven. We, then, when I came on board, we went out to bid. We didn't get any good bids. We went out to bid a second time, and we had gotten, we received three bids. One was to knock the building down and build two, two buildings there, and it was 180 units. The other one was a developer that's currently in a development project in the city of West Haven that seems to be taking, you know, a very long time. So, we didn't think that they had the capacity, nor did they have the wherewithal to do it or the funding, and theirs was, I think, 120 units. What we liked about this project was they're going to repurpose the existing building, and it would be 30 units. So, we thought that was more acceptable. And yes, so this is a non-tax-producing building currently. We will get the sale price, we will get the sewer fees, which is 30 times $3,500. We will get the building fees, and then it will be a tax-producing. So, you know, it really be, will be a revenue driver. We looked at other options, right? How much would it cost for us to knock this down? It's $1 million to remediate the building. We had already gotten that report a while ago. So, it would be $1 million to remediate. It would cost us another $1 million to knock it down. You can't just knock a building down. If we wanted to renovate it ourselves and turn it into, I've heard, you know, like maybe a community center, well, now we got to remediate it for $1 million. Now, we have to renovate it, and now we have to run it, when we are already looking at other options for a community center. So, we couldn't knock it down. Well, we could, but it would be very, it would cost us a couple of million dollars, and just holding on to the building would just, you know, not produce the revenue. So, I think this is a, a good project overall. And the other thing that we're looking at is we've put together a grant application to kind of clean up the area behind Styles and behind the plaza, because it is in a TOD section, right? We're in a, we're close to the proximity to the train station. So, we want to be able to clean up that pathway to the train station. Doing this project will help us with this grant, because we're going to demonstrate we will have more footpath towards the train station. So, it's also hopefully going to be a springboard to clean up that whole area. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I ask my, my committee members to withdraw, I just, quick comment is I do want to thank not only the mayor, but Mr. Fontana, Mike Gigello, Paul Dorsey, anybody that was involved in this project and getting this project moving in the right direction. And like I said, it's, it's been a long time coming. Those that have been on the council last time, you know, we might have been looking for that, you know, the lettuce and everything, and I think that would have been cool, but unfortunately, it just didn't fall through. So, I, I've, I've heard from the Ideal Group, they're very enthusiastic, they're very, they can't wait to, to start this project. So, thank you again for, for bringing this out in, in front of us. Oh, Councilman? Yep.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I said, I said councilman, I meant chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Being that Style School is in my district, I just felt compelled to, to comment on it. When I very first heard that we were leaning towards apartments, I, I think I shared the view of a lot of, a lot of folks going, you know, do we really need more apartments? But, I did tour the building with the mayor and with you, Mr. Chairman, and saw for myself what the conditions really like. And I do know that folks have been accessing the building and completely wrecking it, and the police are busy with that, trying to keep it secure, and it's almost impossible to keep it fully secure. And then, when the mayor and I met with Mr. Fontana and ran through the numbers, this absolutely makes sense. It is completely cost prohibitive for the, for the taxpayers to shoulder the burden to remediate, renovate, knock down, carry the building. It's just cost prohibitive. So, I think that the smaller number of units makes sense. It's in a unique area where it's, it's in the middle of some commercial, it's in the middle of some industrial, it's in the middle of, you know, the train station, some residence. So, it's a weird spot to develop. But, listening to the plans, seeing the numbers, I'm 100% on board with this, and I, I thank you for all the diligence, Mayor, to get this project to where it is and, and putting something, hopefully, that's going to be a, you know, a revenue driver and a tax revenue driver for us. Thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Mayor.
I just want to follow up. It's a really good point. I just want to reemphasize, these are market rate units. You know, I know there's always concern about housing, and folks say, what does that mean? You know, we, we have a very, we've had a very high percentage of affordable housing in our city. We, we are not, when we're developing, we're not looking to increase our density, right? But, when we have market rate opportunities and folks that are coming in and they might, you know, use the train station, that's what, that's what our vision is here. So, I just want to clarify their market rate, and we'll make sure they're market rate. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, who was our, my second? Can you withdraw your second?
Yeah, withdrawn.
And withdraw the motion.
I withdraw mine.
At this point, Chairman, I would like to set up a, not only a public hearing for our next meeting at, I guess?
6:45.
Yeah, 6:45. Because I want, I, I also want to have the developer bring, show up with their PowerPoint. So, I didn't know if you wanted to make it earlier on 6:45, or you want to stick with the 6:55.
Do you want to do 6:45? I think it's better?
If they're going to do a PowerPoint, yeah, probably going to need to, get it all set up.
So, how about 6:45, Chairman?
6:45.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's much better, so.
On March 10th.
March 10th, yes. All right. Done with that one. And the next one I have is Communication C from January 27, 2025 Agenda from Mayor Doreen DeBoer regarding a request to refer the proposal from Ideal Group LLC for the redevelopment of Style School to the West Haven Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to bring this out favor, a motion to bring this out favorably.
Motion.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Just so everybody knows, Public, P&amp;Z approved, accepted that, their due diligence on that port, so that we're just accepting that tonight. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, seeing none, passes favorably. And the time now is 7:39, and your committee on public lands is now complete.
Thank you, Chairman Donovan. Time is still 7:59, and we are back as councils as a whole. Up next is unfinished business, which there is none. Sorry? What did I say? 7:39. That's why Stacy's in charge. No unfinished business, and now we will go into committee reports. Back to you, Mr. Donovan.
I might just have to read Communication A quickly.
What she said.
I'll let you read it.
Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for February 2025 will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Donovan, I think it's yours now.
Fine. Thank you very much. The time is now 7:40. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, is this the right one? Yes, this is marked different, but to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on public lands, to whom was referred the matter of Communication B from Kathy Coniff, Assistant Planner, requesting authorization under Section 57.3 of the zoning regulations, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and act on application made by the owner of 509 Campbell Avenue to replace the exterior lighting to be constructed in public right of way. Reports that the committee met on the 24th day of February 2025 to consider said matter, it is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Whereas Al Shuler Building LLC, owner of the real estate known as 509 Campbell Avenue of West Haven, has successfully applied for and received ARPA funding to improve the facade of this commercial property in downtown West Haven. And whereas Al Shuler Building LLC has submitted a plan to the West Haven Planning and Zoning Commission requesting approval of outdoor lighting that will extend from the building and overhang in the airspace above the city sidewalk abutting its property. And whereas Al Shuler Building LLC has sufficiently shown by its plan that such lighting apparatus will be placed at a height that will not impede pedestrian traffic or otherwise affect normal use of the city sidewalk. And whereas Article 4, Section 57.3 of the city, of the West Haven zoning regulation provides, no application shall be reviewed by the commission or commissioner of planning and development that requests any projection or construction into the public right-of-way street or sidewalk without prior approval of such project or construction by the City Council of the City of West Haven. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of West Haven, in accordance, in accordance with Article 4, Section 57.3 of the West Haven zoning regulations, hereby authorizes the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Commissioner of Planning and Development to review and act on the plan as presented by Al Shuler Building LLC to install outdoor lighting that will extend from the building and overhang in the airspace above the city sidewalk abutting its property at 509 Campbell Avenue of West Haven. And so moved.
Thank you. I have a motion regarding a matter under Section 57.3 of the zoning regulations to authorize planning and zoning to consider and act on an application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I don't have a resolution. I don't need a resolution for that, do I? That we send it proceed?
No, just, just announce the public hearing.
Just announce the.
Just the public hearing, not the other issue. That's the next one, anyway. Requesting a Communication C, requesting a public hearing on March 10 at 6:45, not only for the public hearing, but also to have Ideal show up with the PowerPoint as well, and I'm assuming Mike Gigello will be here or somebody to answer any more questions.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the clerk to set a public hearing on Communication C for March 10, 2024 at 6:45 PM. Mr. Chairman, do you want that in this room, or do you want that downstairs?
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I would think this room, but you think we'll get enough? I mean, we could do it downstairs. We have to.
Do we want to have the public hearing in council chambers or in the courtroom? I think here should be fine.
Yeah, it's not as though we're, I would say here.
Okay. So, we'll have a public hearing on March 10?
Come wrong, it wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah, so the only, the only thing I caution against is if we do get a lot of people that come, and we already have started the live thing, we would have to, I don't know what we would have to do, because we might have to call Mike.
We would call a, yeah, we'd have to call it.
So, we would have to not start meeting.
I would still say here, but.
Okay. So, we'll call a special meeting, or I'm sorry, call a public hearing from March 10 at 6:45. Council chambers on Communication C, and we will invite Ideal Group to give a presentation and Corporation Council as well.
Yes.
That it, Councilman Donovan?
Just a question. Communication C from Steve Fontana. That one I got to read?
Yes.
No. That's the, sorry. No, I already did that. That's the announcement from Steve Fontana. That's the public hearing.
The next one.
Communication C we already approved.
You, you accepted it in committee?
We accepted that January 27.
And now you could have the whole council accept it?
Okay. I don't have a resolution for that.
May, may I?
May I.
May I have a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning's approval of Communication C from January 27, 2025?
Perfect.
Motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, Councilman Donovan, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Lox, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm, I'll say.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate it. Moving on to liaison reports, are there any liaison reports? Councilwoman Callahan?
Hi, thank you. I'm not sure if it's liaison or new, but I did get an email from a constituent, and they were asking if we can open the compost site at least once a month on Saturdays since the ice storm. People have a lot of trees, branches, sticks in their front properties, and obviously now we don't pick that up because leave pickup is done. So, I've had a couple of people ask if maybe we can even open the compost site once a month on Saturdays, because a lot of people work nine to five during the week, and it's only open, I think, from seven to two or eight to two. So, it was a request from a couple of people. It was a rare instance that we had this ice storm, but I know we had a lot of trees and sticks and branches come down. So, that was just a request from a couple of people in our area. Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Councilman Donovan?
Just follow up on P&amp;Z. Yeah, they, they're excited about this project at Style School as well, so I don't see any issues unless they come up with something new with, with P&amp;Z having an issue with that. Other than that, they're all for it.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports?
This is just a thank you to Public Works. They came out and helped out tremendously, um, with some manhole covers that, um, were loose and came looser with the plow. So they came out right away and fixed those as well. And also the potholes, um, in District Six. They've come in and, uh, helped out a lot with those large potholes we had. So thank you to them.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Councilwoman Tucker?
I just want to remind people of the Black Heritage Event that will be held on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, um, in the Harriet North Conference Room. Levi Jordan will be honored. Um, and there will be several people that will be recognized on that day. Um, but it will be a wonderful event. Um, the high school chorus will be singing. There'll be a lot of, um, you know, I guess, wonderful things that'll go on on that day. So I just want to just remind people of the event and hope to see people come out and celebrate. Eleven to one.
Thank you. Other new business? Councilwoman Garth Writ?
I want to let the council know that I screenshot Kathy Hebert's, uh, documents and sent them all to you just so that you have them. I'll be, uh, working otherwise, I'd be going on Saturday to the cleanup in Don's District, Margerle Drive. I hope some of you might, might, uh, consider going. Also, just a reminder that, uh, the, the final day is, uh, February twenty-eighth for voting for the K-9, uh, grant from the Hometown Foundation. And you can again, go there and, um, vote. You get one vote. And then after that, you get however many you want to pay for. So that, I don't, I can't, for some reason, I can't click on my picture, but if you go to my council page, the, uh, website is right there. And that's it.
Thank you. Other new business? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. Question that we haven't asked yet, cause it's kind of been a while, because we were so happy with it. Uh, Mayor, I have a question for you. Have we heard anything on our beloved conference center yet in regards to where they are with permits and getting ready to spring into action in the spring on, uh, getting our restaurant up and moving for that timetable of fifteen months?
Uh, they're moving along. There's been no obstacles. They have a P and Z meeting. Mike, is it P and Z meeting this week or maybe next? They, they, this is about the Kelsey. They're moving along. They're on track. They're, they're scheduled for a P and Z meeting. And then they're hopefully moving forward. We got to clean the building out. Um, one little, uh, issue is the state of Connecticut hasn't signed the contract for some of the funding, but that's just because it's in legal process. But that shouldn't be a holdup actually, because on a parallel track, they're going for all their approvals.
Thank you, Chairman.
I would be remiss in saying, um, we hear a lot of negativity, uh, around this city. So I want to point out something good that's happening. As I have a very interesting issue in District Eight, um, and I've been in touch with Sheila in the Health Department and your new appointment, uh, Mr. Carano, as the Commissioner of Human Resources. And they have just been tremendously responsive to me, um, with the residents' concern, uh, to the point that on, on a Friday night, I was, uh, at a location with Mr. Carano at nine o'clock at night, trying to figure out what was going on. And he's been very helpful. Sheila's been helpful. Hillary's been great. Um, so Mayor, just want to, uh, to recognize that department, that they are doing a, a very great job and, uh, very responsive. And I just wanted to thank you. Any other?
You're welcome.
Any other, uh, new business? Councilman McMillan?
Good evening. I just want to say congratulations to, uh, Catherine Tucker of the National Coalition of One Hundred Black Women, which they honored her on Saturday at Anthony's Ocean View. It was a beautiful recognition for her. Our mayor was there in her red. And I just want to say congratulations, Kath.
Excellent. All set? Councilman McMillan? Councilman Johnson?
I almost forgot. And if I didn't mention something, I'd kick myself. Uh, believe it or not, tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary of my unexpected heart attack. So here is my message to everybody listening. Diet matters no matter your age. I am down 20 pounds because I just changed my diet. If you are going through a struggle, whether it's an addiction or any other problem in your life, one, remember this, there are people that care about you and your actions every day impact them, whether it's a little thing or a big thing. I have two little girls at home that I should not be around for, but I am. I have doctors tell me all the time, I am a walking miracle. So my message to everybody in honor of Heart Health Month, get yourself checked. You are not immune no matter your age. Get your blood work done, have your physical done, because if it can happen to me, it can happen to anybody. Thank you, Chairman.
Steve, I think I speak for everybody where I say that we are very, very happy that you are here with us. Any other new business? Mayor?
Uh, I too want to congratulate Kathy Tucker. It was a really nice event Saturday. Uh, and speaking of heart attack, they, the event, they made us like measure our waistline and, oh. I left there, I was very deflated. We talked about all sorts of, don't drink, don't eat, don't, you know. But anyway, it was, it was a lot of fun and there was a lot of people there for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I know we didn't have a finance report, but I just want to, uh, mention that Thursday's MARB meeting is a big meeting. So, um, I have been asking for a subcommittee meeting. Subcommittee hadn't met for nine months. And, um, you know, it all comes down to this criteria. So I'm just going to recap, you know, one more time. I know I'm like a broken record. So we at the city have met all the criteria in the original state statute that says how you get into MARB and how you get out of MARB. In May of twenty twenty-four, criteria was added that the city cannot have engaged in any unsound financial practice that's within acceptable accounting standards. I've been asking since that legislation has been updated, what does that mean? It's very nebulous and it's very undefined. Tell us what the goals are and we will hit them. I promise you, we will hit them, but tell us what they are. So it's kind of, you know, I didn't ask to go out in the beginning, uh, because we had work to do, right? But after a year of, you know, everybody collectively working together, the employees, all of you, our residents, really buckling down, were there. The consultants' reports show that we are, you know, financially strong. And they've made a lot of comments about us improving our governance, which includes our ethics, our transparency, our communication, our human resources. So as I sit here today, I still do not have defined criteria. So this subcommittee, um, there was a subcommittee held two weeks ago where, um, and the goal was to define that criteria. Much to my surprise, um, we weren't included in the executive session because, you know, the goal was for us to talk about, um, what we think we, you know, believe we're hitting with this neb, even though it's nebulous, we think we're hitting a lot of this criteria. And then at the meeting, they really weren't able to conclude because we weren't in the meeting. Uh, so they rescheduled another one. And that is Tuesday morning. So the subcommittee is meeting before the full MARB on Thursday. Did I say Tuesday? Thursday. So at the subcommittee meeting, we will be discussing what that criteria is. And hopefully there will be some final, finalization on what are some of that criteria. And then the subcommittee will present it to the full MARB. And I hope that the full MARB will take some action on voting yes, that's the criteria. They're not going to vote, we don't believe, uh, to let us go on Thursday. Um, because first things first, they have to vote on what is the criteria. I think it's reasonable request of ours, right? What I said to them is we don't mind you moving the goalposts. Tell us where you're putting it on the field, right? So we could aim for it. So I've done a lot of work, uh, in, um, we do have some sort of preliminary list that we were given around the criteria in executive session, uh, that we have been looking to respond to. So, uh, wish us luck. And we'll see how it goes. But, but we really need the MARB members to, um, look at where we stand today. So that's that on the MARB. Oh, so, uh, yes, Black Heritage is Wednesday. We have a health fair on Thursday. Get your blood pressure checked. Uh, it's for all employees and all elected officials as well. Our employees have been working hard to do that. Finally, I just want to address the comments earlier by the young woman who left. And just remind everybody that our silence during the public portion of the program does not mean in any way, shape or form that we are not horrified and heartbroken over those tragic events. Today, I attended a, a debriefing of our police officers, right? They get together whenever there's an, um, you know, a horrific event. And, um, I wanted to go there to tell them, um, the police chief was holding the debriefing. I wanted to go there to tell them, I want to make sure they hear that we appreciate what they do every day. And I was speaking on behalf of all of the elected officials and the community when we understand what a difficult, difficult job that is. To have walked in on a horrific scene, an unimaginable scene like that, um, is, is just devastating. So for there to be ever any suggestion that, um, there is, uh, you know, negligence or uncaring, it's just can't go unchecked. So I, I think we, uh, need to say that. I also want to, um, let you know, because it's insinuating that nothing was done. You know, one of the things I obviously, you know, checked when, when this happened was, was there, was there any calls to the home previously? There was not. So this isn't, you know, of course you want to prevent every tragedy that you can, but there was, the police department were in a position, were in a position where they knew ahead of time. So it's important to say that. And our hearts break for these families. It's just unimaginable and collectively our community, you know, really weeps for all of them. But, uh, you know, week after week, we have, uh, one or two speakers that come, um, and make some accusations that are just, um, not on facts. And, um, just felt I needed to address that. Thank you.
Mayor, I want to thank you for that last set of comments, because one thing I was wondering as that young lady was speaking was, was this household pre-identified, uh, by the police? And with you saying no, it's, it's a tragic event. But I, but I have to echo that the sentiment that perhaps the police or the city was negligent when presumably there was no pre-identification, request for resources, request for help. Um, I, I think that that's, that's, that's harmful to have that kind of rhetoric out there. And I'm glad that you, you clarified that. It doesn't take away the sting, you know, as the community for this horrific event. But, um, I just think that it, it paints the fuller picture. So thank you for, for bringing that out. Um, and I think on behalf of the, the council in the city, we wish you the best of luck this week with the MARB. Um, you have really taken the reins, uh, to work to get us out of, um, out of their oversight. We are in a, a better place and I think that we're gonna keep going forward. So I wish you the best of luck and, and thank you. And, uh, with that, we're done in like an hour, folks. Does anybody want to talk about anything? Anything else you want to do? Play some cards? All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Any opposed? Abstentions? Have a good night.